6 o'clock on October 6, 2022. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. Going to note for the record that this meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all other communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. The record will reflect that attending this board meeting tonight are myself, William Ramsey, the Chair, and board members Joe Fisher and Elizabeth Klein. I'd note that the ZBA is joining us this evening. I do see the Chair, Robin McGuire. Robin, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
You want to call your board to order?
This is the Hingham Zoning Board of Appeals. Today is October 6, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. I'm not going to reread the remote access statement that Bill Ramsey just read, but I would note again that this meeting is being offered remotely for the ZBA at least. With me tonight is Mario Romania and our regular member, Paul Healy, and of course, myself, Robin McGuire.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. For those willing, please stand and face the flag of our nation.
Aye. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberties and justice for all.
Please take your seats. The Chair states and finds the Select Board will enter into executive session with the Zoning Board of Appeals under Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss litigation strategy with respect to the Riverstone LLC decision issued by the Housing Appeals Committee on September 23, 2022, because discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town. The Board will reconvene in open session. So I would make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. I would now turn to my colleagues on the zoning board.
Thanks, Bill. The Zoning Board of Appeal will enter into executive session with the Select Board under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss litigation strategy with respect to the Riverstone LLC decision issued by the Housing Appeals Committee on September 23, 22, because discussion in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town. The Board will reconvene in open session. So I would accept a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor with your name, please?
Paul Healy, aye.
Mario Romania, aye.
And Robin McGuire, aye.
All right, we are recessed, folks. We'll be back in a little bit. We're going to speak to the town attorneys in executive session, but we will reconvene here in a little while. So we'll see you back in a little bit. Thank you. We are recessed. Do we have the zoning board all back online there?
So no one provided refreshments while we were gone?
All right, I see Robin, I see Paul. Do we have Mario up there?
He's here.
Mario's up there.
There, Bill.
Yep.
Okay. All right. All right, good evening again. I'm going to call the Hingham Select Board back to, meeting back to order. We are reconvening, reconvening in open session. I'll turn my colleague on the Zoning Board of Appeals, Robin, go ahead.
And the zoning board of appeals is reconvening as well.
All right, good evening back. Good evening again, everyone. Going to read a statement briefly. "The Massachusetts Housing Appeals Committee, which sits within the Department of Housing and Community Development," going to refer to them as the HAC, "issued a decision in the matter of Riverstone LLC versus Hingham Zoning Board of Appeals on September 23, 2022. The HAC decision ruled on a comprehensive permit for a 40B development off of Ward Street. The HAC decision allows for 32 housing units to be built, including eight affordable units. The town disagrees with the HAC decision. The town is concerned that the HAC's decision may negatively impact the health and safety of residents, of future residents of the Riverstone Development and existing residents in the abutting neighborhood. The town will fight the HAC decision. The town has a right to appeal to the courts, and we intend to take a vote under this agenda item tonight to do just that. To give a little background, in March 2016, Riverstone LLC filed a comprehensive permit application with the Zoning Board of Appeals pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40B. The applicant proposed construction of a 36-unit condominium housing development, including nine affordable units to be called Riverstone, located at Viking Lane off of Ward Street. The ZBA engaged in a thorough review with the assistance of staff, council, and peer review engineers with expertise in traffic, civil engineering, wastewater, and wetlands. The ZBA hearings were consistently well-attended by neighbors to the proposed project who provided valuable feedback and knowledge of the neighborhood. In-depth research into potential impacts on health and safety for the direct abutters and future residents was undertaken by staff and consultants and reviewed by the ZBA. During those hearings, the developer reduced the size of the project from 36 units to 32 units. After over two years of hearings and legal proceedings, the ZBA voted in July 2018 to issue a comprehensive permit for the project, subject to conditions carefully crafted to address substantiated local concerns in order to protect the health and safety of Hingham residents, including those that would be residents of the Riverstone Development. The town believes the conditions the ZBA imposed are critical to mitigate adverse impacts of this proposed project. Riverstone LLC appealed the approved comprehensive permit and its conditions to the HAC in August 2018. In 2020, a multi-day hearing was held at the HAC, including the testimony of expert witnesses of both the town and the developer. For the past four years, the town has invested substantial staff, consultants, and attorney hours in financial resources defending the Board's decision. The town reaffirms its commitment to protecting the well-being of all Hingham residents present and future. Between 2016 and today, the town has approved Chapter 40B applications, which created more than 400 new housing units in the Town of Hingham. With the approval of these housing units, the town has exceeded its Chapter 40B mandate, which the state sets at 10% minimum housing stock with an uncontested 11.4% of its housing units qualified for inclusion on the state's subsidized housing inventory. Hingham has been able to make these affordable housing gains through a lot of hard work over the years. In addition, Hingham has been diligent in protecting existing affordable housing stock by taking legal action to enforce deed restriction violations. The Hingham Affordable Housing Trust has actively pursued the acquisition and preservation of affordable housing units. During that same period, town meeting has appropriated over $2.2 million in Community Preservation Act funds to community housing uses. Town remains committed to the creation of housing opportunities that benefit the communities. We likewise remain committed to protecting existing and future residents from development that adversely affects the public health and safety. It is for these reasons that the Town of Hingham would take this HAC decision to court. We will take public comment this evening and refer such comment to the town's council. In addition, you may direct any comments or concerns you may have in writing to the town administrator. However, as a matter of the proposed Riverstone Development is the subject of ongoing litigation, the town and its respective boards and official will be unable to comment or provide statements, nor will we be able to provide any responses regarding the proposed development. But we will take public comment this evening after we deliberate. But before I continue, let me just turn to my colleagues on the board to see how they would like to proceed this evening. So let me turn first to Joe Fisher.
So a lot of you look familiar. I was on the zoning board when this decision was considered. I'm the one who actually signed the decision on August 6 of 2018. Your comments have been extremely valuable. And at the time, the participation was overwhelming, and I can see it has not diminished. At the time, the Board looked at numerous issues, considered those issues, issued conditions that we thought appropriate, and although we have not voted yet, my intention is to vote absolutely in support of defending the decision that was issued and to pursue an appeal.
Liz, what are your thoughts?
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. I know you worked hard on this, and thank you, Bill, and thank you all for being here and everyone that wrote letters and sent emails. We received all of them and have reviewed them all, so thank you. I also think we should appeal and hope we can move forward with that.
As issued by the statement I just read, I'm also in agreement that we should continue to fight this development and continue to appeal. So let me turn my attention now to our Zoning Board of Appeals to see what their thoughts and if they want to weigh in. So Robin, I'll turn to you.
Thanks, Bill. Joe Fisher has always been a tough act to follow, so I don't want to repeat what he already said and what you said, Bill and Liz, but let me turn it over to Paul Healy first and ask for your comments. Nope, you're on mute, Paul.
I don't have much to add other than to thank the residents for their continued interest and support of our efforts to address this. I have great confidence in the legal team assembled to address this at the next stage, should that be the course we take, and I think lessons learned at this point in time.
Mario?
I don't have much to add. I think we should appeal. That's all I'll say.
All right, and I agree as well. I think we should appeal.
Robin, thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to ask therefore, Bill, should we go ahead and vote the ZBA?
No, Rob, what I'll do is I'm going to open up the public comment first, and then I'll turn back to you. So what I'll do for public comment, we do have quite a few residents here, so I'll take public comment in person first, and then I'll go over to Zoom. If anybody on Zoom wants to offer public comment, I'll turn to you then at that point. But let's, we have quite a few residents here, and Lisa Hawkins-Taylor, how are you? For public comment, folks, before we do that, if you could just come to the podium, state your name and address, just for the record, and if you could try to keep it to two or three minutes, that'd be great. So Lisa, good to see you this evening.
Hi, thank you, guys. Lisa Taylor, 16 Mile in Circle. First of all, I want to thank the Board and the ZBA for this opportunity to speak. I also want to thank the town officials and staff for the sheer amount of work that has gone into this over literal years, especially the ZBA, current and former. As we know, this 40B plan was in the queue prior to Hingham Safe Harbor being recognized. Like many Hingham residents at the time, my learning curve was steep. Since then, I have thankfully learned what safe harbor means and more, and though there are a lot of layers to the 40B process, I didn't anticipate being here like this tonight. Blindsided is not an official or legal term, but it is applicable to how many of us feel within the abutting community. The majority of the town's waivers and conditions, things that in theory would have helped protect our health and safety, have largely been dismissed within the state's approval. Many are asking, how did we get here? What's next? I know legally we're not going to get a lot of answers. It's totally okay, but I'm not going to list all of the well-documented things and numerous health and safety concerns that are well documented. They're already, but I will recap the few that are, to the best of my understanding, applicable to tonight's vote. There could be more. I may know what safe harbor means, but I'm still learning along the way here, like a lot of people. So the concerns, the site map changed significantly during the state review. Per regulations, it's my understanding, significant design changes could have thrown it back into or out of the queue. I don't know what the official term is. It did not, so there's a lot of questions on what exactly the new Agress sightlines, traffic patterns, water runoff, ledge blasting, what it could entail. This extreme lack of information at this juncture this far in is a major concern. For the mechanical septic, I have two words, nitrogen loading? Google it. I don't know. We are concerned about the large septic's health and environmental implications, the maintenance plan and lack thereof, and its proximity to aquifers and other fragile environmental areas. And lastly, per media reports, the builder may be suspended from 40B activities. This is a clear concern, obviously. I'd say you might, you guys are probably looking into it, but you won't. It's okay not to comment. Anyway, there is one positive thing I can say about this whole process. Yes, a positive thing. The shared challenges inherent to a journey like this has given me opportunity to connect with my neighbors at a level I may not have otherwise. Say hi to everybody, right? A light surrounded by dark, we have come together forging community in the best, most purest sense of the term. For that, I'm incredibly grateful. In fact, this sense of community is the main reason why I'm standing here, respectfully asking for the members, originally it says Board, but now you guys just voted, so thank you, respectfully asking the ZBA to preserve and protect us as well as the greater Hingham community in parallel. Please vote in support of, what's the right term, fighting, going, yeah, for the Riverstone, against the Riverstone 40B from proceeding in such an outrageously unsafe manner. Thank you all for your time and attention to the matter.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Is it helpful to have more comments reiterating exactly what Lisa said?
Well, what I, what, no. And I would, and I would know for the record, we did receive all the emails, and we have read them. Obviously, a lot of the emails had the same themes in them, so we haven't been able to respond to all of them, but we did receive all of them. We have read them all, too. But would anybody like to speak publicly at this juncture? Seeing none, I'll turn to Zoom. Would anybody on Zoom like to offer any public comment? You can either just use the raise hand function, or if you physically wave your hand, I will recognize you as well. Give us a couple of minutes for people just to turn their camera on. I do not see anyone. Going once. All right, I do not see anyone looking to offer public comment this evening. Okay, again, if anybody would like to continue to email, we have received quite a few emails over the last week to two weeks, and we will continue to read them. Also, I want to note for the record, too, those emails are forwarded to our legal team as well, and the concerns expressed in those emails are forwarded to our council, and they will be taken under advisement in preparation for litigation strategy, so thank you for that. With that, then, I'm going to turn now back to the ZBA. Robin, would your board like to offer a motion?
Yes, thanks, Bill. Based on the commentary earlier that we had, I would accept a motion to appeal the Housing Appeals Committee decision of September 23, 2022, in the matter of Riverstone LLC, Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40B project.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Paul Healy.
Mario Romania, aye.
Robin McGuire, aye.
Robin, thank you. Let me turn to my board. Would anyone like to offer a motion? I think I'm going to turn to Joe for this one.
I am going to make a motion to appeal the Housing, the Housing Appeals Committee decision of September 23, 2022, in the matter of the Riverstone LLC, Mass. General Law's Chapter 40B project, under the provisions of the Town of Hingham General Bylaws, Section 5A, Article 5A, Section 7, and to direct the town administrator to coordinate said litigation under the provisions of Section 2B24 of Chapter 263 of the Acts of 2016.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, and there's no need for the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. The motion carries unanimously. Robin, do you have a motion? Yeah, actually, no, some, we'll take the applause. Go ahead. Generally, you don't get those, so we'll do that. All right, Robin, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Paul Healy, aye.
Mario Romania, aye.
Robin McGuire, aye.
All right, Robin, Paul, Mario, good to see you as always. You have a good weekend.
Thanks, everyone.
Take care, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
All right, you're all welcome to stay if you'd like, but if you want to leave now, I'll give everybody a couple of minutes to exit the room before we continue, but thank you. You're welcome to stay if you'd like. You're welcome to stay if you'd like. Thank you. Thank you. The approval of minutes. Joe, you ready to proceed?
I am ready to proceed.
Liz, you ready to proceed?
Yes.
All right, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated September 20th, 2022 at 6:30 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm as well. I'll take a second motion.
I move to approve the minutes dated September 20th, 2022 at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
All in favor by roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm as well. The motion carries. I'll take a third motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated September 28th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor by roll call, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm as well. The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider the approval of the application for a restaurant common Victular Farmer Series pouring permit for malt submitted by Untold Brewing LLC, 96 Derby Street, Unit 330A, Hingham, from Matthew Elder, founder, president, and proposed manager, Mike Dyer, the vice president. And see, Mike here, Matt, good to see you, and Courtney, awesome. All right.
I'm getting support.
Who's going to do the presentation tonight? Matt or Mike? Mike, come on up to the microphone. State, we all know you, Mike, just state your name and address and position for the record.
Sure, absolutely. Mike Dyer, 156 Union Street, Hingham, co-owner and vice president of Untold Brewing.
Great. Just tell us a little about your application. You know, obviously, I think we all have learned about it. We're all excited about it, you know, and thrilled you're here and thrilled for you, Courtney and Matt. But tell us a little about the restaurant and what you're going to be doing up there if you get a chance.
Absolutely. So we, as you guys have paraphrased pretty well, we started working on the development of a 2,300-square-foot restaurant and brewery. This would be located in essentially the back right corner of Derby Street Shops. It was about a one-third space takeover from the Talbotz flagship store that was in the back corner there, kind of adjacent to Crate and Barrel. The brewery and restaurant will consist of offering basically seven days a week, operating from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Sunday, which is in alignment with Derby Street, kind of typical mall hours. We'll be offering basically a restaurant menu of 12 to 15 different, kind of rotating season items, done in partnership with clandestine kitchen, which I think a lot of people here in the South Shore area know for offering really high-quality, organic, sustainable, locally sourced meals, things like salads, burrito tacos, charcuterie items for kids as well, too. So it should be a really nice.
You're making us hungry.
This is what we try to do. You've got the marketing guy here. From a brewery perspective, we were installing essentially a very small nano-sized brew house. It's one barrel in size, which is 31 gallons. We intend to brew on that probably once or twice a month, offering essentially experimental, kind of research and development-type brews that would be available exclusively at Derby Street. The vast majority of the beer that we would offer or sell onsite would come from our production brewery in Situate, which we would transport up as part of the farmer brewers license that is currently with the state ABCC. We're here before you tonight for basically the extension of that, which is the pouring permit. The farmer brewers license, which is issued by the ABCC, enables us to sample beer up to two ounces in size at a time and to sell packaged beer to go onsite. It would not enable us to sell like draft beer, like a full pint, which is what we have down in Situate and which you would find at most other breweries and taprooms throughout the state, of which there's a little under 200 at this point in time, farmer brewers. Our intent is to create a family-friendly restaurant, much like our Situate location, comfortable, casually elegant, you know, a place where people can come in and quickly grab a bite at lunchtime, come in and enjoy a beer. And, you know, for part of us that we're really excited about is being able to offer basically an extension of what we've had at the Beer Garden there that's been really successful for the last two years and turn it into a year-round offering for Hingham residents and guests.
So I've seen some pictures of the construction, so I know it's coming along good. Do you have an anticipated opening date?
Yeah. Knocking on wood. Right now, the way construction's moving along, we should be in a position, the final week of October, to be doing our final installation and fits. We obviously have some staff training that needs to be completed. Courtney has some crazy space-age oven that requires somebody to come in and train people on it. At that point, we're probably looking first weekend of November to kind of start doing soft openings. We want to make sure that when we do open, that it's a couple nights of like well-structured, very small groups, do some, you know, shorter hours thereafter before we do a full grand opening to ensure service is perfect.
Well, it's a, you know, as I've said to you, Mike, it's a great partnership. You know, Courtney, you've been making great food for many years. I love the fact that you both live in Hingham. You know, it's a Hingham business, mall-owned business, coming together. Untold is a great brewery, probably, you know, if not the best brewery on the South Shore, one of the best breweries in the state. You know, Matt, you and Mike have done a great job with the brewery, and I think the combination of Courtney's great food, healthy food, coming together with Untold is going to be such a popular restaurant. You guys are going to do really well up there. So I'm really excited for both of you, and I'm looking forward to being up there a lot. So I have no questions, just excited that you guys, this is coming together for you. So with that, I'll turn to Liz.
Thank you. No questions or concerns about the application. Love the collaboration and the concept. And just, it's interesting probably for people to know this type of license is very specific, where you're doing the production onsite and only selling your own beer, not other beers or wine.
Correct.
So I think that's just interesting for people to know, but I'm very excited for this to move forward.
Joe.
Well, first, you described it as casually elegant. That's how I describe this board. We are casually elegant as well. And the question I have, I'm not sure if it's for Tom or for you, but where are you in the permitting process in terms of the Derby Street permits from the planning board, parking, you know, just things like that?
Absolutely. So we had a preliminary meeting, I want to say it was back in May, and we met with essentially all of the primary departments at once. So that's what, health, planning, building, went through the entire, you know, concept of the project and spoke to them about the intent and those type of things. From a seating perspective, that's obviously one of the big, you know, issues or kind of pieces over there. This is, we're permitted for 33 seats. 33 seats is what we will have, physical seats over there, which falls under the current umbrella cap of Derby Street Shops. I believe Victoria McGuire is virtually with us as well, too. She can speak or attest to that along that lines. Courtney has been working really closely with health and Susan Sarni and her team. They've, you know, at this point, permitting is moving along. We don't suspect or think there's going to be any issues. Building as well, I mean, Mike Clancy and his department have been keenly involved in all of this so far from a construction perspective. We've already had the rough plumbing inspection done. Electrical is tomorrow. You know, we don't see any issues there as well, too. Everything's been going pretty smoothly from that perspective.
That's good to hear. Where I was coming from is that often there's an order in which the permits are issued. Are we in the right order? Does this permit, does our authorization precede, or is it after the other permits? Do you know how that's typically done?
I'm not aware of any restriction that it needs to be given after a CO, for instance.
Well, it wouldn't be after CO, but basically, as long as like the planning board said, this is an appropriate use and there's appropriate parking, and then we would issue a, I just don't know where we fall in that chain of.
We wouldn't be able to issue, you know, they wouldn't be able to deliver on this if they don't have a property that's.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, everything here looks fantastic, and I share the opinions of Bill and Liz. I just want to make sure that we're proceeding in the normal course for this.
A couple of years ago, we restructured the A3 at Derby Street, where to make it easier for Derby Street to move businesses in and out up there, so the parking is more flexible.
Oh, good, okay.
But I think they probably need an A2. But that's a good question. So maybe, just maybe, Tom, can you just follow up with Emily tomorrow?
Sure, of course.
Or Jennifer?
Yep.
Because I'm thinking it'd be a use change, but the A3, I think they could.
You could just slide right in?
Yeah, yeah. We did that my last year on the board, so they can slide right in so long as the spots are there. Because what would happen, the tenants were coming and going so quickly.
Right.
The Derby Street was constantly coming in.
I know.
I worked with Victoria on that one. Yep, she's.
There's a lot of head nodding.
Yeah, she is, she's saying, yeah. Yeah, so, okay.
Great. But no questions on the, I mean, on the specific licensing authority. I think it's a complete good package. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any members of the public have any questions or comments? If you do, just raise your hand, either physically or virtually. All right, seeing none, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for a restaurant common Victular Farmer Series pouring permit for malt submitted by Untold Brewing LLC, 96 Derby Street, Unit 330A, Hingham. Matthew Elder, manager, in accordance with the application for a new license filled with the Town of Hingham on August 30th, 2022, with the following hours: Monday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. This approval is subject to the approval of all applicable town boards and departments, submission of a valid certificate of insurance evidencing liquor legal liability, insurance coverage, and at least the minimum statutory amounts, and the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm as well. The motion carries unanimously. Mike, Courtney, Matt, congratulations. Good luck going forward. Looking forward to seeing you guys.
Looking forward to it.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the contract with Sea White Marine for the Barnes Wharf float system project. Believe we have JR Fry zooming in tonight with Kathy. JR, why don't you introduce the project, and then I'll let Kathy talk about the procurement aspects of it. JR, good evening.
Good evening. What we are, you can hear it right?
Yeah, I can hear you. You faded out a little bit there at the end, but why don't you come at us again?
Okay. So what we are requesting is approval of a contract awarded by an open bid process that would go to Sea White Marine for the construction and installation of just over 3,000 square feet that will be used in conjunction with the Hingham Maritime Center at Barnes Wharf. The floats will be installed next spring, I believe, and they will place older floats that are no longer usable, pre-life. Do you have additional questions?
No, I didn't know if you were still talking or you just faded out. JR, thank you. Kathy, do you have anything to add on the procurement aspects of the project? I think, I'm sorry, Kathy, you're muted. It's okay. There you go.
I'm sorry, I didn't know. I muted myself.
No problem.
We had two bidders. One, the one that we, a low bidder, Sea White Marine was significantly lower than the other one. It was 400, sorry, 148,000 versus this one is 306,735. So Sea White Marine gave us a good bid, and I know JR and the Marine Maritime Center were happy with, that they were able to, they had alternates that put those in, hoping that they can get it, but not sure depending on the price, and they were able to cover all of the adults and get exactly what they need, so.
Kathy, thank you. And Nancy, I know you're here this evening, too. Do you want to speak on this, too? Come on up. How you been, Nancy? Good to see you. Just your name and address for the record, if you don't mind.
Nancy Kerber, 6 Blackberry Lane, and here's a member of the Hingham Maritime Board. Been working with you guys in the town for a while on this project and finally kind of getting to what feels like a, at least an inflection point, but we're excited to be moving forward. We really very desperately need new docks. The system that we have is quite old and showing its age, and we make it work, but it'll be safer and happier for everybody to have some new floats. So we're excited for all the alternates that we were able to get, all the alternates, and we appreciate all the support we've gotten from the town and from JR, and look forward to working with you guys to get over the finish line.
Nancy, thank you. Yeah, I know this project's been a long time coming, so I know a lot of people will be happy if we get this wharf in there by the spring. So JR, thank you for your hard work and getting this going, so appreciate it. All right, Joe, any questions?
Well, first, thank you for moving this project forward. I did have a couple of questions. So I'm looking at the contract, and it says installation completed by March 10th. Is that realistic, given weather conditions? JR?
The installation will be negotiated, in other words, if we can't install at that date due to weather conditions, we'll extend the contract for that purpose, but we wanted to have a near-term date to assure that the contractor would be incentivized to get the float supply to our property early.
So I don't see anything in the contract that gives you flexibility on that date. So you're saying that you would just renegotiate the contract at that time?
Yeah, basically, once we receive the floats on site, we'll work with the contractor to get them in as early as possible.
So Tom, if they want to change the contract, does that have to come back to us?
For new approval.
Not for a change.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Not unless the dollar.
Not typically, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Typically, they wouldn't because it doesn't involve extra money, that sort of thing, so I think it falls under terms per view.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't have normally have brought it back to you guys with.
Right, no, no, I'm not looking to have it. I just, I just, oh, procedurally. And I'm wondering, what is the experience with Sea White Marine? Has the town or neighboring towns had good experience with them?
They have done, they have done quite a bit of work along this code. I didn't, the reference checks, our consultant did, Beals and Thomas, and they gave a favorable recommendation, reference checks.
Do we have the Beals and Thomas recommendation here? I didn't, I did not see that in our packet.
I don't know. 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 I wouldn't have normally have brought it back to you guys with.
Right, no, no, I'm not looking to have it. I just, I just, oh, procedurally. And I'm wondering, what is the experience with Sea White Marine? Has the town or neighboring towns had good experience with them?
They have done, they have done quite a bit of work along this code. I didn't, the reference checks, our consultant did, Beals and Thomas, and they gave a favorable recommendation, reference checks.
Do we have the Beals and Thomas recommendation here? I didn't, I did not see that in our packet.
I don't know that we, I do.
You broke up. I didn't understand what you said.
I don't, I did not provide that in the package.
But you do have it?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, no other questions. Thank you.
Liz.
Thank you, JR and Kathy and Nancy and the HMC Board for your patience and persistence with this project. I'm glad you're here, Nancy, because my question was going to be, are you happy with the scope and the timeline? I know we were talking about this fall at one point, but if it can get done in March, that will work.
Right. And yes, that's fine. And we typically get the docks in, especially for the sailing team, the high school sailing team, and rowing if they need it, which is tougher over there. By early April, their season starts kind of end of March, early April. So we'll plan to get, there's still some components of the system that Hingham Maritime already has, and we'll get those pieces in for the sailing team when they need them, and we'll just await the arrival of the rest of the system.
Okay, great.
So that timeline works.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. So yeah, thrilled to see this moving forward and came in within budget, so excited to move forward with it. Thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments? All right, I'll take a motion.
I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Sea White Marine for the Barnes Wharf float for the Barnes Warf float system project in an amount not to exceed $306,735.
Second.
All in favor by roll call vote, Joe.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
And I'm an eye as well, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thanks, JR, thanks Kathy. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the contract with the Trucks Corporation for storm drain cleaning and inspection of pipes. We have Matt Cahill with us from the DPW. Matt, good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Oh, very well, thank you.
Could you let us know about the, the cleaning contract and what, what work needs to be done?
It's a continuation of working with our MS4 permits and our paving projects, the paving program, staying in front of those, cleaning the drains, inspecting them, and looking for issues and deterioration in the system. Just the overall maintenance and operation of the system.
Kathy, anything to add?
Just that I think last year, the first time I worked with Matt on this, it was only for one year. And when the IFBO this year, we put an IFBO for three years because it is a maintenance type of contract. And we did get several bids, but this was significantly the lowest, $1,500 per day for either vacuum or camera usage. And, and so I think we got a really good deal. And it's good that it's for three, you know, so that you don't have to come back each year and try to, and have to renew all the paperwork. It's standard kind of work that they do pretty.
Am I right, the cost is 150, $150,000, is that correct?
Yes, we estimate, DPW estimates about $5,000, you know, based on rebid.
Great, all right, thank you. Let me turn to questions, Liz.
Thank you, Kathy. So I think maybe you just answered my question. Is this annual maintenance? This, this is pretty standard happening every year?
From what I understand, I think Matt can speak to that, but yes, they do it each year. I'm not sure when. Matt can probably answer that, what the schedule is, but.
So yes, the whole part is, we have all this issue areas that will pop up throughout the Solia Resto, the Spurstop, the other MS4 stuff, the side, the old actions. And it, and then along with our inspections of the paving roads that we're planning on doing that we want to get in front of us. If there's any issues there, we want to repair prior to paving.
Okay.
Yeah, the vendor's just beyond call.
Okay.
What DPW needs done.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Joe, any questions?
I just want to make sure I understand the math. So at $1,500 a day with a cap of $150,000, so this is over three years, about 100 days, not about, 100 days. So we're talking at about, you know, 33 days a year. Is that what is expected in terms of what we need to get this work done?
I think you have to look at, there's two different trucks, one's a can and one's a vacuum. Sorry. Did you hear me?
I, I did, I'm not sure, I, what I'm asking is,
What?
how many days a year? So this is basically, you know, 33 days each year. And I'm asking if that's sufficient to get this work done?
Kathy, it might be a question from Matt.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, that is, that's where, based on conversations with Randy, we might, we felt that that would be the sufficient amount of time to address any potential emergencies that could arise and also hit the maintenance stuff we wanted to also say.
And in terms of billing and payment, are we being invoiced monthly, annually? How does that, how does that work? And then on the, you know, if it's on a periodic basis, making sure that, you know, after the first two years, we actually have sufficient reserve for the last year of the contract so that we can get those 33 days in on the, on year three?
So in the, in the contracts in previous, we tend to do an in-house tracking. All payments are tracked through the office, through the, we handle everything. They keep, it will go into our budget report. And they will become a, a product or a tab in the, in the monthly budget.
Great, so we'll, so when we get the budgets, we'll see how much has been used and how much is still available as, as this contract proceeds? Okay, great, thank you.
I think it's, I just add one thing, it's important. We did the bid, we did it, how much they will charge per day. So we based the low bid on the rate that was offered. And, and so the 150 is an estimate, like an up to estimate that we
Right.
put in the contract. So, so if we had a, you know, a huge amount of activity that by the end we didn't have enough, we certainly could amend the contract based on the total low bid of the whole contract, but the rate per, per, per day.
Got it.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with TruX Corporation for storm drain cleaning and inspection of pipes in an amount not to exceed $150,000.
Second. All those in favor by roll call, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well, the motion carries. All right, Matt, Kathy, thanks a lot, have a great weekend.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help.
Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your help. Next item on the agenda is potential votes on warrant articles for the November 1st, 2022 special town meeting. I think, Tom, I'm going to turn it over to you at this point.
Sure, so for the last 17 years, no, I'm only kidding, for the last seemingly 17 years, in the last couple of months, we've been talking at length about this special town meeting. We have two big projects before us, a new elementary school at the old foster site and the new public safety facility coming online. We've had several conversations here and in other venues. And I think it's, we're now ready, we've compiled, the AdCom has compiled the recommended motions, their, their comments, their, we have the, the warrant articles themselves drafted. And now we're ready to send said warrant to the printer tomorrow and get them printed and mailed out to everybody's mailboxes in time to meet the statutory deadline for doing that. So preceding that, for every, as it, as we do for every town meeting, the select board normally will take votes on their position on each of the warrants. And that's what this item is for.
Well.
Each of the articles, I'm sorry, I said warrants, each of the articles.
Well, I can tell you, both committees have done so much work, preparation, the school building committee, the public safety building committee have put tremendous amount of hours into both projects. The staff have put tremendous amount of work into these projects. The past month, we've seen a lot of community interest now emerging with these projects, which has been really great to see on, on social media. And, you know, I've been fielding a lot of emails and calls about these projects. I'm sure you, you both have as well, about tax impacts. People have been calling me about that and some other questions related to it. So the community interest is there. The need is there for both projects. And the amount of work has just been tremendous. And I, I am more than ready to endorse both of these articles this evening and to move forward. But let me turn to my colleagues, so I'll turn to Liz first.
Great, thank you, Bill. And thank you to the, the building committees, as Bill said, and lots and lots of work has, has happened over the past many years. I certainly have supported these projects kind of from inception. I have been happy with the progress, the design, the finance meetings that we've had. I know there's still some permitting work to be done, but I feel comfortable where we're at and certainly support them moving forward. I, I think the, the time is now and certainly want to keep this, this process moving with the votes in, at the special town meeting in November.
Joe.
I think, Bill, you and Liz have said it all. With respect to Foster School, the time is yesterday to get moving on that. Public safety absolutely needs to move forward. The work of the committees, I see Ray Estes out there has just devoted so much time and effort in this. And along with, with others, it, it's really been a team effort. And I am prepared to move forward.
Would any members of the public like to offer any comments about this agenda item? You can just either raise your hand virtually or physically before we take a vote. People are very quiet this evening after, after that first agenda item. Okay, all right. Seeing no need for further discussion, I would take a motion on Agenda Item 10.
So with respect to Article 1, which is construction of the new Foster Elementary School, I move to recommend favorable action on Article 1.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well, the motion carries unanimously.
I'll make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article 2.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well, the motion carries unanimously.
And then finally, I'm with respect to Article 3, which is the transfer of unassigned fund balance to the new stabilization fund. I would like to make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article 3.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well, the motion carries unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda, Item 11, is to approve and sign the warrant for the November 1st, 2022 special town meeting. So Tom, let me turn to you for this item as well.
Again, we have a tradition and process in Hangham where the select board votes to sign the actual warrant every year. And that's what this vote is for.
Okay, so I would take a motion.
I think it's Liz's turn.
Liz, you're up.
Sure, should we just explain what's?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, let's talk about what it is.
John is here, if you want John to, John, I think John's on the phone, is he? Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be, John Coughlin, good evening, good to see you again. But, you know, what, since we have some members of the public here, could you just talk about this agenda item and explain procedurally what we're actually doing?
And then what comes next?
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. I have number 11, all right?
That is great.
So the select board is, is boarded down under Chapter 39 of Public Safety. So if I vote in to approve and sign the warrant, you are issued, I think we called it, a meeting for November 1st. Following the issuance, our next goes, the printer will be printed and was to the conference office. And then we'll also mail it out to each resident in town in 14 days in advance. So this is the meeting technically.
Great, and the 14 days is by, is by statute, correct?
The 14 days is by the town by law.
Down by law. Got it. All right, any questions for John, Liz?
I don't have any questions, thank you, John, for explaining that. I think, I mean, people don't have it in front of them. So it's just the town meeting procedures, which are standard for every town meeting. Article 1, the construction of new Foster Elementary School. So you have the question and then the comment where advisory committee has their recommendation. And then we have Article 2, construction of new public safety facility. And then Article 3, the transfer of unassigned fund balance to the new stabilization fund, which we've been talking about over the past several, well, weeks, months, years probably, but taking part of our unassigned fund balance to, to lessen the impact to the taxpayer. So that's, that's really, that's what we're looking at, that's what we're voting on.
Great, Joe, you want to add anything?
Just, I mean, Tom, I don't know if now's the time to comment in terms of how the town meeting is going to be held in terms of COVID protections and sort of the procedures so that residents are comfortable in going.
Absolutely, thank you for asking. We've been doing some of our logistic planning, starting at the, earlier this week. So we will have, it'll be an indoor meeting. There will not be the COVID spacing people have gotten used to because we need to fit people in the building. We're anticipating a pretty large turnout. These are some big expenditures the town is going to be considering. That said, we will have a lot of personal protection equipment, PPE on, on site. There'll be masks, a lot of hand sanitizer available. There will be an outdoor, I think, Select Fisher, I think you had asked for an outdoor venue. That will be set up. There'll be a tent and ADA accessible flooring. So anyone who wants to sit out there can do so. We'll attempt to get some outdoor heating installed. Obviously, there'll be lighting and there'll be a dedicated assistant moderator for that space, as there will for all three of the traditional spaces at the high school, which is the gym as the, as the primary space, the auditorium as a secondary space, and the cafeteria as the, as the overflow space. So that's our plan right now. Who knows how many folks come? We're anticipating a high turnout. I think for the water company, we had a little over 2,000. So wouldn't surprise me if we had a similar turnout for this kind of a decision. So we're planning for that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
For the water company meeting, did you have to use any facility other than the high school?
No.
No, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so we should, we should be okay with the high school.
Yeah, and we had room, and we had extra room during that meeting if we needed it to, at the high school.
Yeah, so I think we should be fine with, with the three rooms at the high school. And then obviously, if people who want to be outside, it's going to be cold, it's going to be November. But for people who are concerned about COVID, COVID issues, obviously can have the outside option too. Are we doing, are we going to do anything to, are we going to have like a warming tent out there or something? I mean, I, I just, I want people to be out there shivering in the cold, it's going to be nighttime. It's going to be, you know, 7 o'clock at night. I mean, you know, anything we can do to make sure people are warm up.
Yeah, it'll be a tented space, we'll try to get some outdoors heaters, kind of blow heat into the space.
Right.
But it will be outdoors in November. So we will do our best to heat it.
Well, we've been outdoors in November.
Yes, we have been, that's true, that's a good point, we were all outdoors.
It was during the day, but yeah, we have been outdoors.
And any chance that you could have, that we can have more rooms available in the high school so people could be spaced out more?
What we could, it gets difficult because of the audio visual components. Then you have assistant moderators you need. It becomes logistically difficult, the more individual spaces. And what we found during the water company is we had, we had a separate room for guests. We had, we had the two music rooms where we could fit 100 people in each. But again, that's a maximum of another 200 gain. We're looking at about 2,500, being able to fit between the three main rooms. The extra 200, it's a lot of planning, a lot of expense, and a lot of additional logistical support needed to plan for those additional 200, two rooms for 200 people. So we probably won't do that, but we'll have the capacity if we need to expand into it.
Got it.
Anything else?
No.
Any members of the public have any questions, concerns about this agenda item? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so we do have a motion. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the warrant for the November 1st, 2022 special town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm an eye as well, the motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is consideration of community preservation committee preliminary application for projects on town property. And I believe we have Julie Straley, the CPC Chair, here to walk us through tonight's presentation. Julie, good evening.
Hi, Bill, hey, everybody. Thanks for having this on the agenda. So I wanted to just give you a quick overview about the CBA funding cycle so far. We, the committee received 17 preliminary applications for all kinds of interesting projects. The total requested dollar amount was just over $2 million. So there are three required categories that need minimum funding distributions of 10% or higher, and those are housing, historic, and open space. And then there's a fourth category, recreation, which doesn't have a minimum amount. And so the distribution of the applications that we received, we have eight applications in the housing category, five in historic, and four in the recreation category. We didn't receive any applications for open space, but the town had ongoing debt service to pay the, for the purchase of the linear property, which was done in 2016. So that debt payment satisfies the minimum for the open space category. Let's see, continue on with information about the, the applications? Or do you want to get to, get to for tonight?
Why don't we go for the two, for this evening, if you don't mind?
Sure. So there are two applications that you would need to approve because the work would be done on town land. So there is one from the library and one for the tree and park barn. Andrea Young is here, who can explain these projects. I just want to make a note that Michael Akili from the library is very motivated and filled out his application very early over the summer. But the CPC, we haven't updated our website yet, so the application date at the top says 2021. And it is an application for work for the 2022 cycle. It's just that our document hasn't been updated yet. So I just wanted to clarify that in case you had a question.
Thanks, Julie. Do you want me to turn it over to Andrea?
Oh, good evening, and thank you very much. Yes, let me talk about the library project first. I had a conversation with Michael Akili because since this is an historic preservation project, the historical commission had to weigh in and endorse the project so that it can endorse and give it a recommendation to CPC. So anyway, this is a project to digitize existing microfilm. They have about 115 reels of microfilm that need to be digitized. And they are of newspapers from the 1800s through 1970. And this is a relatively, the project will only take about 90 days once it begin. And this will give an opportunity for people to do additional research much more easily. Apparently, there have been a number of requests in the past several years to the historical society and the library to view or have information and research done on, you know, from various newspapers. And so consequently, they thought that digitizing this and making it available would be very helpful. Digital Commonwealth, who does this a lot, is wonderful. But there is a queue that is years long. They would do this for, for no charge, but it's impractical in terms of, in terms of time and making this available. So I think, so that's it, that's the essential information.
Any, any questions about the first, first project, the library digitational, digitization project, Liz?
No questions. It certainly seems like it would be useful to have it digital so people, I'm assuming, can, can do research and search through the database. So it sounds like an interesting project to me, no questions.
Joe, any questions?
So, so what, I just want to understand what, what we are voting on. We are not vote, am I correct that we are not voting on whether or not this is an appropriate project for CPC or for approval of this project? We are voting to act as the applicant to apply to CPC? And then CPC will make the judgment about whether or not this qualifies and whether or not it's appropriate? Am I, am I correct in that regard?
No, not, not exactly. So it looks like you're authorizing the Hangham Public Library to file the application.
Right, but, right, but we're authorizing an application. We're not saying that the application
Right.
should be approved or qualifies.
That's right, you as the owner, that's right.
Right.
Is that, is that correct? That's really to Julie.
Right, it's just that, it's not, it's not saying that you, you're voting for whether you think that this is, you know, should be done and the bunch should go towards it. It's just, I'm the Hangham Public Library to.
To make the application. And am I correct that CPC has not yet made a decision about whether or not to proceed with this?
Correct, so we, we, of the 17 applications, we, they turned down one application at our meeting last month. Now we're meeting again in a couple of weeks to review the final applications. And from there, there was a subgroup of applications that we're not really sure if those will be able to be applied for CPC, CBA funding or not. So we're going to have to make a determination. And, but this application will probably go forward because it is eligible. It is in the glory of preservation.
Great. And you said this goes, basically going back to newspapers in the 1800s?
Yes, that is correct.
I mean, I think that's, as someone who does occasionally research going back that far, I think this is, will be terribly useful. So that's great, thank you.
Yeah, so now speaking to, obviously, I don't want to speak to the merits of the project. I'll reserve that for CPC. But my role as, as a select board chair this year, and Joe did this last year, I am the liaison to the library board of trustees. I'm learning about the great stuff going on at the library. And obviously, someone who loves our town's history, I think this is a wonderful project. So happy. So happy to support the project going forward, and it sounds like it's, it'd be a great addition to the library. So thank you, Andrea. All right, on to the next, I'm sorry, anybody from the public have any questions about this, this agenda item? All right, seeing none, Andrea, you can go on to the next one if you don't mind.
All right, thank you very much. The next is the Tree and Park Barn, which is the orphan building, I have to say, because it seems as though it's been shuffled around between Capital Outlay and CPC. So this year, we're applying again for funds from the Community Preservation Committee. And the Tree and Park Barn is iconic in that it is a typical battalion aid building. Not typical, but it just, it's exquisite in terms of what it offers architecturally. And the last time the building was painted was in 2013. And this, and within a year, the paint started to peel. And so it hasn't been treated in any form since 2013. So this year, we come back again to ask for funds from the community to not only restore, but also to preserve the building, because we're at a point where there have been numerous pieces of the building, architectural features falling off. And the Westy Mr. Dickor has always taken very good care to pick them up and put them in the garage, which is right next door. In examining the building, the, there are numerous areas that need to be restored in terms of actually replaced, like the coins on the side of the building, some of them. And then the window sills themselves are rock solid, but they need to be, they need to be painted, they need to be caulked, and in order to live another, I don't know how many years, but they are, you know, they're solid. But unfortunately, due to some of the features, like the gutters and some of the stuff that's falling off, there is a leak in the upper floor. And consequently, you know, as we know, leaking into a building is not, I mean, that just compromises the building over time. And so that's, that's part of the concern. So we view this as not only a restoration project, but a preservation project as well. By painting the exterior envelope, this will guarantee that the building is protected. So that we are.
Andrea, thank you. We actually did, just last week, we had Mr. Orr here to renew his lease for the barn. So we were very appreciative of that partnership with him, and particularly where he does do a lot of work inside the building to keep it going. But I echo your statements about the need to invest work into that treasure of a building we have in town. So thank you, thank you for continuing to keep that on everybody's radar.
Thank you very much.
Joe, any questions?
So is this the same building that we have the lease?
Yes.
Yeah, the one.
Right, and so is this work that is being proposed outside of the responsibilities of the tenant?
Yes.
No other questions? Thanks.
Liz?
No questions. Thank you, Andrea.
Any questions, any questions or concerns from members of the public? All right, then I would take two motions from members of the board.
I'll move to authorize the Hingham Public Library to file an application for community preservation funding for the historic newspaper digitization and database creation.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries. Now take a second motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the Historical Commission to file an application for community preservation funding for the restoration and preservation of the Tree and Park Barn.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Julie, thank you very much. Andrea, always a pleasure.
Thank you.
Hope you all have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Right.
Next item on the agenda is a recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day. Now, this item came to us from our HRC, who's already off, the committee, commission's off to a wonderful start, and this came to us as a proposed agenda item, and we are thrilled to take this up tonight. And before we issue proclamation, just wanted to thank the commission for its already great work and for bringing this item and other important items to our attention. Joe, you want anything?
No. It's important that Human Rights Commission continues to bring to our attention those items that they deem important so we can discuss and move as needed.
Liz?
Agreed. Thank you to the Human Rights Commission for bringing this forward.
I do see we have some HRC members who are present this evening. Would anybody like to add any comments or ask any questions? We do have a handout. Sir, go ahead, you can say your name and address for the record.
Great, thank you to the select board for entertaining this motion on Bradley, 871 Main Street. I wish I could be there in person, but I'm under the weather today. I'm representing the Human Rights Commission, and we'd like to propose that the King of Recognizes Indigenous Peoples' Day on the 2nd of Monday in October. This is part of a growing trend. Last year, President Biden issued a proclamation and recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day. The Massachusetts Legislature is seeking to pass an act establishing this holiday, House Bill 3191, and Senate Bill 2027. And currently, five towns have made the decision to establish this holiday, Cambridge, Brookline, Somerville, Amherst, and Northampton. The Human Rights Commission believes that this recognition is part of a growing movement to change the narrative of our history toward a recognition of the strength, resilience, and contributions of America's indigenous people on whose land we live. Acknowledging Indigenous Peoples' Day is the first step toward understanding a more complete history of Hingham public spaces. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this testimony.
Thank you, John. I hope you feel better. Would anybody else like to add any, add any comment? All right, seeing none, I think we're going to issue proclamation. Liz, you'd like to read it?
Yes, thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Town of Hingham Indigenous Peoples' Day. As President Biden proclaimed on Indigenous Peoples' Day in October of last year, since time immemorial, American Indians, Alaskan natives, and Native Hawaiians have built vibrant and diverse cultures, safeguarding land, language, spirit, knowledge, and tradition across the generations. On Indigenous Peoples' Day, our nation celebrates the invaluable contributions and resilience of indigenous peoples, recognizes their inherent sovereignty, and commits to honoring the federal government's trust and treaty obligations to tribal nations. Our country was conceived on a promise of equality and opportunity for all people, a promise that despite the extraordinary progress we have made through the years, we have never fully lived up to. That is especially true when it comes to upholding the rights and dignity of the indigenous people who were here long before colonization of the Americas began. For generations, federal policies systematically sought to assimilate and displease native people and eradicate native cultures. Today, we recognize indigenous peoples' resilience and strength, as well as the immeasurable positive impact they have made on every aspect of American society. The contributions that indigenous peoples have made throughout history in public service, entrepreneurship, scholarship, the arts, and countless other fields are integral to our nation, our culture, and our society. Indigenous peoples have served and continue to serve in the United States Armed Forces with distinction and honor, at one of the highest rates of any group, defending our security every day. Today, we acknowledge the significant sacrifices made by native peoples to this country and recognize their many ongoing contributions to our nation. On Indigenous Peoples' Day, we honor America's first inhabitants and the tribal nations that continue to thrive today. We encourage everyone to celebrate and recognize the many indigenous communities and cultures that make up our great country. Now therefore, we, the select board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim October 10th, 2022, as Indigenous Peoples' Day. We call upon the people of Hingham to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Voted the 6th day of October, 2022. Signed William C. Ramsey, Elizabeth F. Klein, and Joseph M. Fisher.
Would you like to make the motion as well?
Sure. I'll make a motion to proclaim October 10th, 2022, as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the Town of Hingham.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries. Liz, thanks for reading that.
Yes, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, our appointments. Are there any appointments this evening, Joe? Do you have any? Liz, you have any?
No.
All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. Do any members of the public, would they like to offer any public comment this evening? Seeing none, I'd now turn to town administrators, select board reports, and we'll start with Michelle.
Nothing, thank you.
Tom?
Nothing, thank you.
Liz?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Joe?
Yesterday, we concluded Yumki Four, and I just wanted to thank the Hingham Police Department for their support. They were at the synagogue, made traffic a lot easier, and their presence was very much appreciated. That's it, thank you.
I have nothing to report. Hope everybody enjoys the weekend. I appreciate all the good work going on in town this week. It was a long week for everybody, so thanks to everybody, particularly thanks to Tom, Michelle, and Art for the hard work in preparing for tonight's meeting. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, the motion carries. Hope everybody has a great weekend. Take care, thanks for tuning in.